So, I'll just make sure that you'll stand up and raise your right hand, or raise your right hand. Don't do as I do.
Right. Depends on where you're standing, right?
And repeat after me. I, Jared Smith.
I, Jared Smith.
Do swear that I will.
Do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Five.
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Five.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state and the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
And laws of the states and the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just need to sign this. You can sign first. And then, oh, you want me to? Let me do it with your pencil, it's the same color.
Welcome aboard.
Oh, thank you, Terry.
All right. Perfect. Might we hand that down to the city clerk so I don't do something with it? All right. Tonight is the last meeting before our winter recess. Moving forward, next week, our last public meeting, next week on December 6th, we will be continuing the orientation for new council members. And the city council will have an administrative function session regarding lobbying training. And then on Wednesday, December 13th, as we had done, did last year, we have invited our District 20 delegation to come and hold a legislative priorities meeting with us. It will be here in the auditorium at 7:30 PM. So this isn't one of our regular council meetings, it is a special meeting with our D-20 delegation. We will, though, take comments that evening, but we're asking people to sign up ahead of time. So if anyone would like to speak at that meeting on December 13th, when we will be meeting with our D-20 delegation, you need to sign up ahead of time. And information will be on the city website to do that. We will then be in recess until January 10th. So that's this evening. I believe there are no other agenda items. So then we will now move on to public comments on voting items. We have two voting items before us this evening. The first is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract to augment the traffic study for the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. If there are any public comments on this, please come to the podium, state your name, and where you live, and you have three minutes.
Maybe not. There, that's all. My name is Marie Rizzo. I live at 7113 Central Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward Two. Congratulate my new representative here on the council. Very happy that you're up there, and congratulations to the rest of you as well. I'm here to represent a group of 50 people who signed a letter to you all raising concerns about the city's traffic study for Tacoma Junction. We appreciate the council's decision to hire a consultant independent of NDC to conduct the city's own traffic study. Using a consultant who is independent of the developer's traffic study is an extremely important step in the process of evaluating the effect of the proposed development on Tacoma Junction. Our concerns are not fully addressed, however. We ask you to further modify the proposed ordinance to address the following issues. As stated in our November 18 letter, the city-sponsored study should be geographically and conceptually comprehensive, not merely complementary of the NDC study. The city appears to have modified the proposed ordinance to increase the overlap with NDC's study, but mere overlap is insufficient to ensure that the complex issues posed by Tacoma Junction will be thoroughly and independently addressed for the city's own purposes. For example, while we think it's fine to share data with NDC, the city's consultant should independently determine what additional data should be gathered to satisfy its own concerns about traffic flow and safety, which are much broader than the NDC's. The city should have its own independent basis to evaluate the following questions. How will the proposed development affect traffic flow and safety? The city should examine the issue using a range of development scenarios. How will potential changes to the intersections of Carroll Avenue, Ethan Allen Avenue, and Sycamore Avenue, Ethan Allen Avenue affect traffic flow and safety at the junction under a range of development scenarios? Will a new traffic light be needed to serve the proposed underground parking garage or the proposed lay-by? What is the range of permissible alternatives for deliveries to the co-op and other business in the proposed development? The lay-by should not be the only option evaluated. How will the proposed development affect the fire station? How will the proposed development affect the complex interaction of auto traffic, buses, trucks, pedestrians, and bicycles at the junction? What modifications to pedestrian crossings and bus stops will be needed to accommodate development at the junction, and will they be sufficient? How will the proposed development affect the intersections of Route 410 and New Hampshire Avenue, Maple Avenue, and Piney Branch Road? In answering all of these questions, the city's study should be able to stand on its own without relying on NDC's analysis, because the city and NDC have fundamentally different interests.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. And Ms. Rizzo, I ask if you do have that letter, if you could, since it's updated from the one that was sent, if you could add that email to us as well. Thank you. Any other comments on the first voting item this evening?
I'm Vice President of Historic Tacoma, and I want to also emphasize that we would like to see more intersections included in the study, particularly at Piney Branch and 410 because of the stoplight at Holly. Really, everything is, it has a different flow than, I would say, Maple, and I think it's really very important you include that. I understand Marie was asking for a lot of that and other things as well. I'm just here to really say that from historic Tacomas' perspective and understanding of our historic district, road widening has always been, the threat of road widening has always been a major concern, and it's a very real concern. And so whatever we do at the junction, whether it's through overdevelopment or inappropriate reconfiguration of intersections, we increase the risk for that road widening to happen because our, that area is National Register eligible. And as such, as testified by Neil Peterson, and Terry, you may remember this, he came and he spoke to us when we were concerned about the city giving up right-of-way, that he, and the threat of road widening by that action, he came and said, "The single thing that prevents him from widening our roads is our historic district." And when I review what was done, and I haven't seen these diagrams, I'm going to tell you that what was proposed in what is referenced in this document would actually harm the eligibility of that area and enable SHA in the future to widen that road. And this is a very serious issue. Maryland Historical Trust is in charge of looking at these things. Because our intersection is its original configuration, it provides tremendous protection under the law. And so you all are pretty new. Terry, you were here back in those conversations, you all are pretty new. And I look forward to talking more with all of you about this, because it's a very serious issue. We can, the reconfigurations I saw would, are, would be very terrible, and I don't think would be approved. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight on this voting item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to our next voting item, which is the resolution providing for the city council's winter recess. Any public comments on that? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to general public comments. Go ahead, Mr. Huber.
Good evening, folks. Paul Hubener, Carroll Avenue. I want to say congratulations to the new members of the council, duly elected, and thanks again to the members who will serve once again. We're fortunate to have you. I've had a similar thankless job, but we're very grateful for that. Now, as you discuss the upcoming budget, please pay close attention to the mad king, the billionaire cabinet, and the entrenched Republican leadership. Along with hateful cuts to administrative agencies, they have attacked the planet's health, undermined the Affordable Care Act, cut the children's health insurance program, and now written a tax plan for the rich paid for by the poor and working class. So regarding the city's annual budget, keep in mind that the city's assets have increased over $1 million from the prior year. Forty-eight percent of that, or nearly half a million dollars, was due to increases in real property taxes without exceeding the constant yield rate, which was the fight last time. Not coincidentally, the Republican tax plan will eliminate the state and local tax deduction. So now is an opportunity for you to learn to say no to special interests, represent all the citizens of Tacoma Park, and cut our property taxes. We're going to need it to pay the additional federal levy. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Go ahead, Ms. Loveless.
Hello. My name is Pat Loveless, your official peace delegate. And I'd like to tell you people, I'm going to miss you people on the recess. And I want to thank you people for the great year you've given me in our city. I want to welcome in the new city council, and I want to remind you people, it's better to be sworn in than sworn out. So I want you people to remember that as you go into the recess and make your plans for the new year. I want you people to also realize that Richard Payne, he's the one that brings me down here. He wheels me down in the wheelchair from Franklin Apartments every week. And he's been doing this since July, and he's been really, really good at it. And I want to thank him from the bottom of my heart. And I want us, the city, to thank him too for what he's done. Without him, I probably wouldn't have got here as often. Matter of fact, I know I wouldn't have. And I also want to tell you people out there, this is a bad time to act like a turkey. You know what happens to turkeys now? They get their hedge cut off, they get stuffed full of breadcrumbs and stuffing, baked in the oven, eaten, and then the next day, they trip down the toilet. So remember, don't act like a turkey this time. Enjoy the turkey with your friends. Think about ways you can work for peace. Think about ways you can make your family more joyful. You know, have compassion for people who put, lost their loved ones to a disease or to violence, gun violence, drug violence, or whatever. But remember, these things can be prevented if we only had, used our federal budgets a lot better, because we got a guy in there now who's riding it like, like he's the king of the asylum of some kind. And we need to do something about that. We got to think about who we vote for. You know, and think about that during the recess, how we can get the educated voter out and educate the ones who are not educated. So please, come to our demonstrations if we have any in September, in December. Please come out to them. We've had demonstrations on medical marijuana and getting high to stop, threatening to take our leases away if we use marijuana in our own apartments. And also, we want to ask people to remember that there's a lot of things going on now, so keep your eyes and ears open and work for peace. Welcome in 2018, I mean, 18, 2018. Okay, everybody? Love it, love it, love it, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Loveless. Any other public comments this evening? Yes?
Thank you. I just want to say good evening to the mayor and council members, new and old also, and city manager and clerk. My name is Colleen DePaul, and I live at Victory Tower here in Old Town. We are so grateful to the city for the affordable housing and a friendly, lovely, and conveniently located community. Our apartments offer seniors, including those of us with disabilities, using walkers and wheelchairs and what have you. But tonight, I choose to highlight a longtime safety issue in our location, where Tulip Avenue intersects Carroll Avenue. At this intersection, there are pedestrian signals and a stoplight, all owned and staffed by the State Highway Administration, as all lights and signals are in Tacoma Park. For some reason not understood by my fellow residents and me, the stoplight at our intersection was never fully installed. There is no light facing the Tulip traffic, only a stoplight for Carroll Avenue vehicle traffic. Further, the pedestrian signals are maintained by Montgomery County. Resident Association was strongly made aware of the safety issues when one of our residents was crossing with her preschool-age grandchildren. This was really more than a year ago. She was using the pedestrian go signal when a vehicle entering from Tulip, seeing a light, but no light lit up, turned into Carroll and nearly ran them down. When the safety issue was brought up at our Resident Association meeting, we contacted the State Highway Administration, and the engineer for the district came and spoke to us in February 2016, assuring us that the light was in the design stage and plans to install the light were targeted for October 2016. And here we are, past October 2017, and still no light.
Ms. DePaul, thank you so much. Can we get a copy of your letter? Because that's something we would actually like to pass on to the State Highway Administration, if it's possible.
Oh, my goodness. I didn't get it typed up, but I can pass.
We can do that. It's even better.
I can just pass the note.
Yeah, we'll come down and get it for you. Thank you so much for coming this evening and for reporting it.
And so, our council member, I wanted to thank him, and sorry he's not here tonight, Peter Kovar, because he had illness in his family. And so he has, he has tried to help us and made contact with the state legislator, Will Smith, who actually was in the area, and I understand he, he actually came out and checked the story out, went to the site.
Yes, Ms. DePaul, this are.
We have, we, we hope to continue with your support and, and that we will get the light installed. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Paul. Any other public comments this evening?
I'm Carlton Malcolm from the Essex House, and I want to congratulate all the nominees and those who won. Mr. Jared is there again. Mayor is there again this year. I voted for you, okay? Just remember that. Well, I want to talk about, since I've been listening to you lately, talk about intersections. And I noticed that in the mornings, there is an intersection that gets very crowded. I'm trying to leave from Ritchie Avenue to go across Piney Branch Road. A lot of kids going to school, sometimes can't get across on Piney Branch because the traffic is flowing so heavily. And I'm wondering if there's something can be done, like maybe stop signs or something like that, to slow the traffic down to give these people a chance to, you know, because hundreds of kids go to school every morning, and they sometimes use that route. That's what I've been noticing, so I hope we can discuss about it. Thanks, then.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move on to council comments. If any, my colleagues, oh, Councilmember Siemens, you can start us off tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to follow up on a couple of comments that, oh.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, Denise, I didn't see you. I apologize.
I was a little late, sorry. But here's my chance. I wanted to bring to your attention that there are lots of people who walk, you know, up and down the streets, trying to get to bus stops, and there are many single-family homes that have allowed grass and the hedges and things to grow over the sidewalks, making it unsafe for people to walk. And I'd like to bring that to your attention. I see that all over the city. It's not safe pushing people out in the street when folks are passing one another on the sidewalks.
Thank you very much. And I will just use this as an opportunity to plug our app, My TKPK. If people, if you do have a smartphone, you can download this app. And if you're walking and see a property that has overgrown shrubbery or is impassable, you can put in a complaint there and it'll get into our system. Though, we noted that, and we hope people will use the app more, so thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to follow up on a couple of comments that were made tonight. Number one was the concern about the traffic situation, especially in the mornings and afternoons at Piney Branch and Ritchie Avenue. I just wanted to let people know that I have been talking with the mayor about scheduling a discussion of that problem to see what, what we should do as far as how we should approach that. It is more than just the people who were here tonight talking about it, there have been other concerns expressed, for good reason. I, you know, those cars are passing in front of my house every morning and afternoon, and so I get a firsthand opportunity to see the complexity of the problem. I also wanted to talk about something that our peace delegate brought up when he was talking tonight. Mr. Loveless, you know, thanked Richard Payne for bringing him here, and he's been doing that since July. It is, you know, it's, it's work. You've got to not just push the wheelchair up and down the street, but also take time out of your schedule and, and do that, and help Mr. Loveless get back to his apartment and get back in bed when he gets home. I know that Mr. Payne is going through a transition and is not going to be able to do that starting sometime in January. So he may be able to get Pat here for the next meeting, which is January 10th, but I know that Pat will certainly be interested in hearing from anybody that could, would be interested in helping him to get to these council meetings every, every Wednesday evening. And if you, if you want to reach Pat, you can call me. My, my email address and my phone numbers are on the city website. The phone number is 240-793-5108. And then lastly, I'd like to mention something that I have mentioned previously, and that is the work that I'm doing with a local nonprofit, Frontline Community Services, and trying to find housing for people who do not have, Tacoma Park residents who do not currently have a home. I mentioned to you several weeks ago that the woman who had been living in the bus stop on Maple Avenue had been placed into a home through this project, and has.
Love it! Love it, love it!
It's been a huge success. It's been a huge success. You can hear it's Ward Four residents are here tonight, and they all know the woman. Anyway, she's, she now is living in a nice home, and she's transitioning to the next phase, which is to find the skills necessary to be self-sufficient, and that includes looking for a job and things like that. It's not something that happens overnight, as you all know, so, you know, we're able to support those efforts, and we're looking to expand this project to include other people. But at the same time, we're trying to do it in a way so that Tacoma Park doesn't become a magnet for anybody who, you know, is homeless at this time. It's something that really needs to be done at the, at the higher level jurisdictions, such as the county and state. I think Montgomery County is doing very well at moving towards ending homelessness in our county. But those who are interested in providing support to Frontline Community Services as we do this work can send a donation to Frontline Community Services at 7112 Willow Avenue, right here in Tacoma Park. They are a 501(c)(3), so it is tax deductible, deductible. And just ask that you, on the bottom of your check, make a note that this is for the transitional housing program, so that it does go to this program, because they normally do housing for, for other populations. So please note that it is for the transitional housing program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. First, I would like to say it feels good to be back. I want to thank everyone for coming out for the swearing-in. I apologize it was so quick. You didn't really get to get all the pomp and circumstances that we had at the swearing-in for the rest of the council. But I do want to dedicate this win to my wife, who's been by my side during all these elections. It's really tough, you know, for your family, but I thank her. I want to dedicate the win to my father, who passed away Memorial Day. A man who served 21 years as an intelligence officer for the United States Army, who believed in sacrifice, service, and leadership. And there's no way that I could ever come close to what he has done for this country. I would like to give a thanks to residents that have come out and supported me during the election. I'd like to thank Jackie, Shawanda, Lee, Denise, Carlton, Alex, Sandra, Patty, Zizi, Gannett, Alma. I couldn't have done it without you guys. Thank you so much. I want to give a very big shout-out to Essex House Apartments. You guys really came through in this election.
Love it!
Don't forget Essex House is the future of Tacoma Park. With all of the residents that live in apartment buildings, you guys are a good model for what can be done if the residents in the apartment buildings really put their heads to it and want to see things happen. So thank you, guys. Last, when we had the swearing-in, I didn't get a chance to thank a couple of my colleagues that had stepped off the council. I would like to thank Councilmember Fred Schultz and Councilmember Tim Mayo for working with me for the last three terms. I learned a lot from both of them, and I appreciate their leadership and look forward to working with them in the future. And finally, I want to say that I was at the National League of Cities in Charlotte, their annual conference. I recommend that all my colleagues attend at least one of their conferences each year. About 5,000 people from around the country and some around the world came to Charlotte to share best practices for municipalities. And one thing that I picked up from one of the workshops that I hope that we can do with our youth council is a master plan, is where you bring stakeholders from all over your community and get together and come up what are the best practices, best things for the youth. And stakeholders. And stakeholders like maybe Washington Ventus Hospital, Washington Ventus University can actually provide resources for the youth in our community. So, thank you once again. It's great to be back with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kostic?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank Public Works for the work that they did on the sidewalks on Carroll Avenue and Sherman. There was an ongoing issue with a drain pipe, a stormwater drain pipe, that was leaking and causing repeated damage to the sidewalk. And I've heard from a lot of residents that they really appreciate the repairs and the smooth going over that site, so I wanted to give a shout-out and thank you.
Councilmember Cerci?
Thank you. So, I want to first and foremost give a special thanks to Melanie Isis. Melanie has served as the Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Community Development Authority and has issued a letter of resignation. The city manager will provide a little bit more detail, but I do want to say that prior to being elected, Melanie was a resource for the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area. Really did a tremendous job in terms of facilitating the development of new community activities such as murals, the Dewali Festival. She took just such a hands-on approach, and so she will be truly missed. So, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to publicly thank her for her service. And, yeah, she will be missed. So, I also want to take a couple of quick minutes to talk about an event I attended yesterday. The Purple Line Corridor Community Development Agreement was signed yesterday, and I had the opportunity to sign it on behalf of the City of Tacoma Park. For those that are not aware, it is an agreement between the Montgomery Counties, Prince George's Counties, a slew of municipalities, including the City of Tacoma Park, as well as Hyattsville and others, a number of nonprofits and different groups that have a stake in ensuring the success of the Purple Line, not only from the perspective of minimizing the impact of, during construction, but also as it pertains to the future of the communities that are along the Purple Line route. So, definitely pushing forward and agreeing to ensure the development of jobs, maintaining affordability in terms of housing stock, ensuring the vitality of the communities that are along the route. So, it was really a great opportunity. Represent, Ike Leggett was there, Sharon Baker, a number of key stakeholders were there. Really provided an opportunity to demonstrate the solidarity that all of the key stakeholders have around ensuring the success of the Purple Line. So, I was very fortunate to be able to attend that event along with city staff, so that was a great opportunity. And tomorrow, I will serve on a panel at the Piney Branch Elementary School regarding youth's success and how parents and community members can help to ensure the success of youth. And I will be speaking alongside Jeanette Dixon and Tony Hayes with the goal of really trying to talk about ways in which different actors can help to ensure that youth are successful. And from my perspective, it's about ensuring civic engagement. So, I see there's a couple of folks here from the youth council. Hey, y'all. But also, things like, that are facing the City of Tacoma Park in terms of recreation center planning and improving the library and all those things, and how they can actually play a role in ensuring the academic success of their children in the community. So, I'm excited about the opportunity for that tomorrow. I believe it is at 6:30. And so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And thank you so much for representing the city at the Purple Line sign. Appreciate that. Okay, I just have a couple of notes. For the upcoming year, I've been asked again to serve as the Secretary-Treasurer for COG, the Council of Governments, on the board, and I will be doing that again next year. And the other thing to let my colleagues know, at the last COG board meeting, as we were talking about the tax proposal that is on Capitol Hill, the board did send a letter opposing the removal of the state and local tax deductions on behalf of COG. The second thing is, want to thank our youth council. I heard they had a very successful first meeting kickoff, and we're excited to hear more about what they're going to be doing in the future. In addition, next week, next Thursday, I've been asked to be on a panel for the Greater Washington Foundation. It is a panel discussion of their new report that looks at disrupting poverty, building social capital, sparking innovation and entrepreneurship, and inclusive growth. So, it's a few really big topics that we'll be tackling. That'll be at the Landsberg Theater downtown on Thursday afternoon. If anyone would like more information, please let me know. The report is going to be up on the community foundation's website. It's very interesting to look at people's opinions of the area in DC, Northern Virginia, and the Montgomery County and Prince George's suburbs. So, I encourage people to look at that, and I think it'll be very useful to this council as we dig into our economic development and housing strategic plan in the future. On Friday, many of us on council and a number of our staff will be attending an all-day training being put on by GARE, the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. This will be a training to help us move forward in adopting our racial equity framework, which we started to last year. So, I think we're all looking forward to that. And then I just want to do a shout-out to our IT manager, Lars Del Savio. You know, I said at our swearing-in a couple of weeks ago that there are lots of things that we do in this job or that the city staff do that people are aware of and you see all the time. And then there's a ton of things that are so important to an individual's life that sometimes we don't even know happens. And Lars really helped out a constituent and their family this week with a problem that has been nagging them. And I just want to say thank you for his persistence in getting that resolved. So, I think that's all I have, and I apologize to Councilmember Kovar, who is on the phone. Do you have anything to add this evening, Councilmember Kovar?
No, thanks. I'm good.
Awesome. All right, then. I will turn it over to our city manager for comments.
Thank you very much. I also want to note that I was at the first youth council meeting, and it was wonderful. We are really well-represented, and I'm excited to be able to work with them. Today and tomorrow, a number of our staff and several community and other stakeholders have been meeting with police chief candidates. And we had two today, we have four tomorrow. The two today were excellent, so I'm really thrilled that we're going to have a good choice. We have had city staff members, including folks from the police department, obviously, human resources, recreation, housing and community development. We've had representatives of the police union, two police chiefs from nearby jurisdictions, a member of the community police chief advisory committee, as well as representative from the search firm. After we debrief with the participants on this and narrow the candidate pool down to a couple, then we'll have a couple more informal meetings, and I'd like to have the council meet with those finalists. Like I said, I'm already happy, so that's something exciting, I think, for the city as well. I now have a question, I have two questions on tonight's city manager comments for the council. The first has to do with dockless bicycles, which you've probably seen the lime green or the yellow ones around town. They are being placed here as part of a pilot program in Montgomery County. And MOUs have been signed between these companies and the county. There's been some discussions about how this works. We would like to, I'm recommending that the city sign on to this pilot program to see how it goes. It's actually being administered by the county, and complaints go to the county and to the companies. But we do need to, if we don't sign on to the MOUs, then they'll not need, then we are not supposed to have them in Tacoma Park. I can't imagine them not being here simply because people are going to ride them here. Nevertheless, that is something that is up to you, and I can sign on this MOU, but I would like your consideration if I should do so. So, I do have information here about, more about the programs, about the, how to make complaints if there's issues with them and that kind of thing. And again, it's a six-month program, so it's not a long pilot program. We'll have to, you know, if it goes forward, we'll need to do something more substantial. It's a six-month program in winter, but I guess it hasn't been winter yet, so. So, I guess I would like to ask if you could just say if you are all right with me signing on this MOU, or if there's some concerns.
I was going to say, I just have one question, one concern. When I looked at the MOU from the county is whether or not we can add an addendum that specifies areas where these, the dockless bikes can be and cannot be. My concern is, and I met with the representatives from Montgomery County Department of Transportation, I know they're working out the kinks on this as well, that the bikes are being left in areas that make it very inconvenient for pedestrians who are walking or people who might have walkers or be in wheelchairs. And I know the county was working with the different dockless bike share folks to try and figure out, can they designate certain areas where they're supposed to be either delivered or dropped off or things like that? So, in the signing of the MOU, is it possible to add some addendums about different areas where we don't want them to be left?
I don't know. One of the things that, there was, there is some strange language about some designated areas, but the problem is that then you've got to somehow communicate that to people who have rented one of these bicycles. And it's almost, it's like, if there's an area where you don't want them, with the exception of a small thing, a small square, something that you can, if you've, if you're, you know, it's within, I think, 350 feet or 500 feet, you may have no idea that there's a location that you're supposed to put them in. So, to me, at this point, I don't mind bringing that up as an option. But I think it's more something that I'd probably rather not do as a pilot program, recognizing that they're getting the same kind of complaints in other parts of Montgomery County, so I think they have to make some changes.
My only other follow-up on that, though, is where they drop off and deliver the bikes, because I know they were having an issue with that. Because talking to Rian Beto Rodriguez, they had designated with the companies that they were to put them in a certain area in front of the civic center, and they keep dropping them off on the corner in front of the Chick-fil-A, which is really inconvenient and causes a lot of problems with pedestrians. So, there may be some way we can at least say the companies cannot drop off bikes or what they have control of, of where they're putting the bikes, when they're bringing them to the city.
I'm happy to work on with that. I just, I don't have the locations in mind at this point, but obviously, if there's a problem area, I would want to identify it and make sure that it's not done.
Then I'm good signing on. They're already here.
They're everywhere.
I know.
Mayor, could I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Kovar.
The one other thing that I think would be really important is to have clear information available for people on what they should do when they find, for example, I've heard from residents who have said that there's a bicycle left in their driveway or.
I just, I just lost, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kovar, sorry, you're breaking up. We can't hear you.
Well, I'll try once more.
Okay.
Yes?
So, the question is, can there be information provided to residents on what they should do when bicycles are left, for example, blocking their driveways or in other inconvenient places? Because right now, there was a whole chain of discussions on one of the listservs, and no one knew what they were supposed to do.
Right. On our, on our city website now, we do have information about how to have complaints and how to contact the various companies. I'm sorry, just to repeat that, we do have information on our website about, under our bikeways program on our website. It has information about how to make a complaint or how to, you know, deal with that. You can't roll them when, if you're not renting them, they're locked, but you can pick them up and move them out of the way, which obviously, if you see something that's in somebody's way and you have the capacity to do that, you should do that. But I also want to really make sure that people do make complaints, because I want that, I want that record of complaints so that the situation gets corrected.
Great. Can we put that in the newsletter? The information the next time it comes out?
Yeah, probably not in the next one, but in the following one we can.
And do you, and do you know if people who use these bikes are told at the time that they do it not to leave them in places that would be inconvenient, because I can imagine, you know, disabled people who can't even move the bike out of the way.
Yes, I've seen it on some of the bike share websites, as well as on some of the bike shares themselves, on the little information that, about how to sign on.
Great. And I know from the meeting I was at, I think they're thinking of penalties too and fines moving forward after this pilot thing if someone leaves them inappropriately. Councilmember Smith?
First, I support signing on to the MOU. I think this is a great alternative to Capitol Bike Share. After the pilot, what is the plan? Is it, is there a revenue sharing agreement with the county?
I don't think there's a plan yet. I think that's to be discussed.
All right. And I would like to see an addendum that says that you can't block the sidewalks with the bicycles.
Right. It is in there, but it is in the language.
Because what I've seen is in the neighborhood, people just leave them all over, you know, they don't really care if they block the sidewalk or block the street, they just throw it down.
Right. I mean, to me, it's also part of an education effort that needs to be done by a number of different folks, and we'll do some of that.
And it's actually against city code to park a bike on a sidewalk also, so I think what the city manager said about education is key. Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the problems have been identified and discussed sufficiently. As long as we're working towards resolving those, I'm happy with the program. I was surprised to see tonight not only a lime green and a yellow, but also an orange one.
Yeah, there's apparently four companies, so there's some white ones I thought, too, but.
But they're already here, so why not see if we can get a little bit of control over it? Thank you.
Councilmember Kostic?
I would also support this, and along with the other information, it might be useful in the newsletter to educate people who are using them as well in terms of recommending, if we can actually recommend places that they put them, as well as listing places where they shouldn't put them. I don't know if we want to say, try to put them in the right of way or something like that. That might be useful.
Okay.
Great. So, let's just see a show of hands. All those in favor of the city manager moving forward with an MOU on this, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Also related to bikes, but pretty nice news, as we found out today, we've been awarded $240,000 on a Maryland Bikeways Grant Award that complements what we've previously received for New Hampshire Avenue work. It won't do a full build-out or planning process, but it gets us a long ways, and so I'm very excited. It was such a neat thing to hear about today. And we've got some of the information about that on our website as well. As Councilmember Cerci had remarked, Melanie Isis is resigning as the Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads CDA. I do have information here in my city manager comments about what the CDA is and what her role has been. They are planning on hiring her, hiring a person as a full-time employee in the future, so they'll be looking for a new person to help manage that district. And as she mentioned, Melanie really has done some wonderful things, so we really appreciate her work on behalf of the city and the community. I have another ask of the council. Sorry, I guess one, since you have one meeting left, we're trying to get everything in. There is a group called, there's American Primitive Guitar, which is not folk music, but it's a way of playing guitar music that is associated with Tacoma Park primarily through John Fahey and the old Tacoma Records and Tacoma Records. through John Fahey and the old Tacoma Records, and Tacoma Records. They want to have a first annual American Primitive Guitar Festival, three-day festival here in Tacoma Park, in this room, or in several rooms. It will include many of the original first-generation American Primitive players who recorded for Tacoma Records, as well as some new generation players. What they're asking for is to be able to use the facility free of charge, but also to charge for performances, so that's different than our normal process. And there would be two concerts that would be on, broadcast on our city TV, as well as a lecture. So, this is not something that I can just approve, this is something that, it would be a council determination, if it is something that's available to do. They do need to know now, so that they can decide how to publicize this event. For those apparently in the know, this is a big deal. It's not something that I'm as familiar with, but, so I guess the question would be, would you allow this facility to be used without a charge for this festival? I'm sorry? You're a sucker for them, okay. Do we know what time it is? Sarah, when is it? It's April?
Mid-April.
Mid-April.
Don't be surprised if I support another one downstream.
And, and their charging admission, do we know what the, then that money will go towards? The Spains?
As Susie's indicated, a lot of people are really excited about this with artists flying in from all over the country, they've agreed to participate. So, what they're looking at doing is, beginning this on a Friday night with free concerts in commercial establishments throughout Tacoma Park, and then on Saturday, hosting a series of lectures, films, and a concert here in this community space on Saturday night, and then another concert on Sunday afternoon. They're anticipating an overflow, so that would be in the Zellie Room, where we'd be able to broadcast it. I'm not sure what they're charging, but they're looking at doing sort of a staggered fee structure, so that if you're really into it, and you want to participate in everything on Saturday, and, on Saturday, it would be, it could be a large fee, or it could be a smaller fee for the concert itself. What I've chatted with them about is the possibility of treating the overflow room, because they anticipate more than this room could possibly hold, as doing that is a kind of a We Are Tacoma event, where there's donations accepted instead. So, there are free, there's a free component of it, as well as a VIP ticket and individual events.
And so the question is, where do the proceeds go?
To pay the, I'm sorry, missed the question.
All the other information was very helpful as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry. To pay for the artists, their transportation, lodging, and accommodations, and promotion. And then also, to establish some seed money for the next festival, they're hoping to make this an annual event. It's being organized primarily by the folks with Ryzome, which is a makerspace that the city has funded in the past through the community development, or community block grant, or, excuse me, community grant program.
How many attendees are they expecting?
The sky's the limit, yeah. This space holds 156, if you put them in chairs, and we've gotten as many as 180, depending upon how flexible they are, and if they like to sit on the floor. They are looking at several hundred people to participate in the concert, in the concert in the week-long, or weekend-long event, because they're also going to be hosting some things in their space in the Ryzome House. But frankly, it's first time, who knows? But there's apparently a lot of excitement about it.
Councilmember Kostic, is this an old light or a new light?
This is a new light, thanks. I was just wondering what our policy is generally in terms of waiving rental fees.
Generally, if, if a group is a, if we're a co-sponsor of something, then we don't have rental fees. Usually, when we're not charging fees, we don't allow payment. They can do donations, but, but there's not a charge at the door. So that's generally how we've functioned for some time. If it's not a free event, then, then they pay for it, but they also can charge for it.
And so, if, if someone wanted to rent the space, would it typically be like a nonprofit or a community group that would receive it for no, no rent? Or would, would they typically have to apply for a waiver for that, or would that just be granted?
It's generally if it's a, something that's a component that advances city council goals, if it's a, you know, something, some kind of community event that's, that seemed to be helpful, kind of on a major topic or something, but generally, we have to have some kind of agreement with somebody that, that we're, being a partner with them on a project. If it's just a nonprofit wanting to do their event, they have to pay.
Councilmember Siemens?
I just was curious, are we bumping somebody to do this?
No, no.
Because I would like to see this thing, the place, full all the time.
I would, too, that would be great.
Yeah.
But the calendar is free, it's far enough out that the space that would be required to pull this off is available at this point in time.
So we have some utilities and some staff time that's going to be our expense?
Right, which is, which is substantial. I don't want to, I don't want to underestimate the fact that we would be contributing because of our, because of the staff that we would need to have assist with this.
Yeah. The only unknown, if you will, is that the church that uses the, the space on Sundays, it's tentatively booked, but based on conversations I've had with John Webster, who coordinates that agreement now, and with the pastor who I ran into on the street the other day, their new space will be available, so that it's unlikely that they'll be in this building past March. Which is a good thing and a bad thing, I mean, it's a loss of revenue stream, but I'm excited for them.
Mayor, this is, Councilmember Kovar, can I comment?
Yes, go right ahead.
I don't have, I don't object to the group being there, but I don't understand why they wouldn't, why we wouldn't want them to pay whatever the going rate is, particularly if they're charging, and, and having, you know, different levels of costs, and there are costs to doing this in terms of staff and other things. So, it's hard to imagine they wouldn't want to do it if we didn't, even with having to pay whatever the regular costs were for the, for the space.
Yeah, I mean, this is up to the council to make a decision about what to do with this.
That would be my view, that we, it would be fine for them to do it, but that we ought to charge whatever we would charge.
Another, another way of looking at it, of flipping it, is if we can get for residents, particularly residents who can't afford it, some way to be, to be free, either in that overflow space, or, or through some online system, that we work out with them. Maybe that would be the way to do it.
Yeah.
All right, so what's on, what has been asked of us is whether or not we would like to move forward with the request for a sponsorship of the American Primitive Guitar Festival, which would mean they would use the auditorium and one overflow room, and not be charged the costs. All those in favor, since I keep forgetting Councilmember Kovar's on the phone, we'll do a voice vote, all those in favor of moving forward with the sponsorship, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
So, three, right?
Yeah, three, three, so it goes down, right? Or?
There's four.
There's four?
Four to three, four to three.
Well, let's just do, do the roll, because I couldn't count, I couldn't hear. Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Kovar, what's your vote?
Oh, I'm a no.
He's a no. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei?
No.
Mayor Stewart? Yes, okay, good, it was, sorry. I misheard, Councilmember DeBala.
Okay, thanks very much. I'm not going to get into, we need to move right along. There is a proposed renaming of the auditorium to the John Fahey Auditorium. This would be something that, if supported by council in a resolution, it would come to you perhaps in January, you could take that up. The Council Chambers was dedicated to Mayor George Malin Miller in the 1970s, so there's, you have to make some decisions about that, and, you know, there's more to talk about, about if you want the Commemoration Commission, or others, to think about how, what the role is of that. But I want to get this on your radar. Going quickly, election information is now online about the, all the various vote combinations. And I've included upcoming dates of importance. For the new council members, we have a employee holiday party on the evening of December 8th, and so if you've not been contacted, we will contact you and, and invite you. As Mayor mentioned, we have a December 13th District 20 Legislative Priorities hearing here in this room, and we are closed over the course of the weekend of Christmas, from Friday at 12:30 PM, all the way through Christmas Day, the 25th, and on New Year's Eve, both the Sunday, December 31st, and January 1st were closed. And I will be away December 22nd through December 29th.
Terrific, thank you. All right, any other questions for the city manager? That was a little longer than we usually do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that.
Clean up while we, our last meeting before recess, just for our new colleagues, you should know, we normally don't have that many items to, to vote on like that. So, all right, now we will move on to our first voting item, the single reading ordinance authorizing a contract to augment the traffic study for the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. I think we turn it over to the city staff to present a little bit before we.
Thank you. This item was, has been discussed before with the prior council. It was initially scheduled for a vote on October 25th, and was tabled to allow for the expansion of the initial scope of work. There has been some, so we went out and we rebid this, and received, we contacted four firms, as well as the University of Maryland National Center for Smart Growth. That had been suggested that we approach them as a contractor. Because they're very busy, they declined the opportunity to bid this time. As we went through the proposals, A. Morton Thomas, AMT, was the lowest bidder and had the best of the various options for meeting the scope of services that we've outlined. And I have a little bit of information about what is covered, there's certainly been many questions about this, and so, I wanted to talk just a little bit, we have two different kinds of studies, traffic studies going on. What we're, have before you today is the City of Tacoma Park Study. Neighborhood Development Corporation also is doing a traffic study as part of its development review requirements. The city's study is to identify options to address safety concerns and mitigate traffic congestion at Tacoma Junction, and evaluate the extent of cut-through traffic in adjacent neighborhoods. The findings will be used to advocate for roadway and intersection improvements by SHA, identify options for the potential modification of existing streets, and supportive implementation of new traffic measures on city streets. We're not doing a full-blown citywide traffic study, this is focused on what happens at the junction with existing traffic, and what could be done to, as it says, address safety concerns, and also try to improve traffic flow. And traffic flow does not just mean vehicles, but it also means buses and bikes, and pedestrian connections. The NDC's study is very limited, it's to identify the impact of traffic generated by the planned development on the existing roadway system. So this is the increased number of vehicles because, that would be associated with this development. The findings will be used to inform their site plan, and to facilitate the review, through the development review process. The city's, part of the city's study would determine the extent of cut-through traffic, and so if there were some, if people are trying to avoid the intersection, because it's crowded, kind of, where does, where do they go? And if there's some changes made to the intersection, what might be the impact on surrounding We were looking in the scope at several intersections to do capacity analysis. The orange intersections are the ones the city would cover, the black ones are NDC's, and the, the one that's at Tacoma Junction's, both at Carroll and Ethan Allen, and Ethan Allen and Sycamore, just kind of blurred together, because the dots cover the whole area. My understanding is that the NDC study would take place a little before ours would take place, so there would be, it wouldn't be exactly the same counts, because it's a different week, but it would at least inform, you know, how accurate both of them are, and we can see how they compare. So I think that would be useful. We would also see what happens, and, once you do counts, then you can start, they have these synchro automatic, these little software programs that show, okay, how many cars go through these various intersections, under this scenario, or under that scenario? So they would play around with a variety of scenarios. What happens if you close Sycamore? What happens if you make Sycamore one way this way, or one way that way? What happens if you close Grant? What happens if you realign the streets, as a number of people, both in the community, have suggested, as well as the kind of concept studies that were done by the same company, AMT, under contract with SHA. One of the things that we'll find out is that there's, sometimes there's places where, when you do the counts, it helps inform, you know, a particular location, or it might just be a larger area. I know there's been some interest, well, what if you align a road more with a driveway entrance versus a road entrance, or whatever? So there might be, you know, it might be 100 feet apart. That might not make any difference in terms of the counts, but, and so there may be other reasons to consider it, or to say it's not appropriate. But where there is a difference in counts, we want to make sure that we do the, do the study, so that we can see what the various impacts are. What we will be doing then is, provided you approve this contract tonight, we will be sitting down with the consultants, and talking through the areas of concern, or interest, or ideas that we have heard with them, and there's likely to be several more intersections that would be included as change order, that help catch some of this other information. We've heard Elm Avenue in a couple places, and how does that work, you know, going out to New Hampshire, or going down to Philadelphia, and, and Maple, or further? What we're looking to see, a lot of times, is what is commuter traffic versus what is local traffic? And so, it sometimes doesn't matter where on a stretch you count them, because you're going to catch all the commuter traffic, we'll see the license plates going in on one end and coming out on the other. This isn't really going to, we're not really evaluating the capacity of the various other intersections, we're just doing counts, so that we can analyze the Tacoma Junction intersection, and the various options for the Tacoma Junction intersection. So as I mentioned, the need for additional work may be identified, I'm happy to work with people about some of those ideas, and, and how to do a change order if the scope of services needs to be changed a bit, and I think we're looking at that. But AMT is a good traffic firm, traffic study firm, this information will be very useful. It will provide a little bit of an independent analysis over the actual Tacoma Junction counts that NDC will be doing. We do want to have coordination and discussion between the various entities, and I would love to have that also with the co-op and some of the other businesses, so that we identify when truck deliveries come, and, and how those things go through the intersection. So, all of that information, the more that we can get that cooperation and information, the better the data is for us to use. We are likely to see a site plan from NDC in late February. It's likely that these counts would be done in early January, after the holidays, but then they do the playing around with the various software designs and that kind of thing. So, I'm not sure that we would have full information by the time NDC prepares its site plan. So I'm not sure that we would have full information by the time NDC prepares its site plan. They will have theirs done because that informs directly what the, what the development plan needs to be. Nevertheless, there's going to be a lot of back and forth and we're going to have a chance to identify, is there something that significantly might make a difference about where the entrance is to the NDC parking lot? Or, you know, is there something about the lay-by? Or is there something about truck deliveries that make a difference in some of these? And that would be something that we'll have a good amount of conversation about and will be helpful as we look at the various plans. Do you have some questions? [laughing]. I've had lots of questions over the last, over the last week, so.
All right. Who wants to kick us off? Anybody? Councilmember DiBala, why don't you kick us off?
Well, as you all know, because you all got the email, I tried to summarize the concerns that I heard from Ward Two residents over the past week or so. For an independent contractor separate from N-R-D-C, check, NDC, check. Comprehensive look, flow beyond the immediate junction, I think, check. Different reconfigurations, including some creative ones that have been floated recently, check. Biking, foot, transit, check.
That's essential.
Some of the details I'd like to pursue and make sure that some of the intersections that were raised earlier tonight, that we, that we talked with, about getting them in. As you said, that ought to be possible. Looking at the map, nobody's talked about Park Tulip and Pine slash Columbia as a place to count, so I don't know.
I think that is actually, I haven't listed all of the things, but we...
Yeah, there's the list and then there's the map.
But here we did determine the extent of cut-through traffic.
So that, that addresses one set of concerns I heard about where you count and how many places.
Right.
It seems to me that this is a substantively different effort from what people were talking about a month ago, which I think is good. That said, I have a list of specifics about bus stops and this and that that we are going to have to work in somehow. The one, the one thing that, if I understand this correctly, so what I, what I thought I heard from Marie Rizzo just now was that the group that sent the first letter has a second letter. And the only thing that jumped out at me about what she said was this, was this question about an independent take on what NDC is doing. And if, and I want to make sure I got this right, what I think I heard you say was, the purpose of this study is different, it's more comprehensive, but the option...
But the counts at the, at the, at the intersection...
Give us the option to then pursue independent, look at some of the things that...
We will get, we will get our own counts for that, for the same thing that they will be getting, yeah.
Okay. So we have the option to ask those questions and pursue that if we need to. All right?
Yep.
I think that's it for me for now.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate the, the work you've done on this plan because it's been an evolving process. And I know that as things evolve, that means more work.
And the price went up, yeah.
And I appreciate Councilmember DiBala's kind of review of the different points that people have brought up, that it looks like you've got most of the bases covered. There were a few things that, that weren't, one of the most glaring to me is, and I really appreciate the fact that you've separated it from the NDC study. But the, the big thing that jumps out to me is some people have suggested that we should do a, a survey that includes almost the whole length of Route 410 through Tacoma Park. And I think that would be foolhardy of us because I think Route 410 historically has been a major east-west passage of traffic from, through Montgomery County. And when you look at that, Tacoma Park is the only section of that with maybe a couple minor areas that isn't four lanes wide.
Right.
You know, we're just two lanes. And I think it's, it's dangerous to ask the state, well, what's our problem here in Tacoma Park? Because we are the bottleneck. We choke people down to two lanes and rightly so from our desire for the character that we want for the city.
That's right.
The other thing, I mean, and the state's realizing this now, that adding more lanes to the Beltway only means that you're going to attract more people. The traffic problem's still going to be the same. So we could, we could widen roads and still have traffic problems. They, they fill the void, traffic fills the void. Anyways, the other, the other thing I would say about that, that whole east-west flow of commuters, the reason that I'm not interested in doing that is that we have a purple line that's supposed to be addressing that specific issue, moving people from New Carrollton to Bethesda and in between. And if we try to be, do everything that we could possibly do to discuss the traffic east-west flow, it's more than we can afford to do. And I think that what we're focused on here is very appropriate. So that's a lot of words to say I, I'm supportive of your proposal.
Thank you. And just to follow up, the, we do want the intersection to work well. What we don't want is something where we have huge backup so people can't get out of their side streets and it end up being just more than a bottleneck, but a real problem. So we do need to have a flow. But I'm a pretty firm believer that it's, it's almost better to work backwards, which is how do the pedestrians get around first? And how does that, you know, and then bicyclists and transit? And then, you know, if, we do need to make sure that loading vehicles can get in and out. But if, if the cars have to go slower, it's okay with me. It's just that, like I said, we want to make sure that it works smoothly so that we're not in, you know, really blocking ourselves in.
The, the one thing I would be interested in hearing from you is Ms. Pierceall's suggestion that we should be careful about the historic preservation component of this. And I'm not, although she was gracious in saying that I was old enough to remember all these things, I might be too old that I can't remember. But I would like to hear back whether we need to add something in here that, that whoever does the survey is going to add a little line about the recommendations and how that would be, affect historic preservation into the future.
It doesn't come from them, it would come from us. And so that's one of the things, we get this, we get data on traffic movement and on appropriate placement for safe crosswalks and things. What it looks like, how that fits in with historic standards, all of that is, is a different decision to be made. Whatever comes out of this study are simply, is simply information with some recommendations about what things work better and what things work worse from a traffic perspective.
Okay. But when making that consideration, we have to know what the impact is, if there is an impact on the historic...
That's right. And so one of the things, generally when the Maryland Historic Trust has made comments, it's been primarily about buildings, not about roadways. I've seen some creative ways to identify if a roadway is changed where the roadway was, so you visually see how things fit with the roadway. Whether or not that's appropriate here is a discussion to come. And I'd love to get the comments from the Maryland Historic Trust and from others as we go forward.
I will go on record tonight, so I can start taking heat early, that I would consider the realignment of the intersection that causes the Morrison Park gazebo, we call it now, a gas station, to be moved to a different location. And that might not be historically accurate, but I think it would be a better location, be more, something that could be better used by the community and more valuable to the community.
Okay.
If it is one of the considerations that is recommended.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Costeck?
Thank you very much for all of the, to the City Manager for all of the back and forth and questions I've had.
It's fine.
I, I really appreciate that we've had the opportunity to reconsider this, the ordinance after the original October discussion, because I think it's really improved and what we're doing with the traffic study is substantively more complete. So I just have a couple of questions. I noticed in the slide you showed about the scope of NDC's traffic study that it didn't specifically mention anything about deliveries. Is there, or the lay-by or how that would work into the intersection?
Well, that's, I mean, they basically have to show their site plan and, and work with the traffic engineers on that, so.
So that, that would be covered by what they're doing?
And it's all, and it all goes into this whole discussion of the development review of the site plan. So you'll see if there's a need to move the entrance to the driveway or change location of crosswalks or the lay-by, that that would all be something that they would look at to see what, what helps the area work the best to accommodate any additional vehicles that are caused by the development.
Okay. So that, that is considered as part of that? Okay. And then it sounds to me from, from what you're saying that the, what we're going to get back from this study is mostly count information, traffic counts. How, do you have information on how they work on the, number, I think it's number four here is the preliminary design concepts? How do they, would they actually be sketching something for us?
Yes, similar to what was actually on, on the, online that they prepared for S.H.A., they would, might show some different configurations and then they would show potential counts of how many cars would go to the left, to the right, how long would the backups being, queuing be?
Okay. Yeah, and I, as others have mentioned, I'd like to see if we can, it sounds like we'll have opportunities to talk about different, different things that they could look at in addition to just the, what S.H.A. had in their study.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we could look at different configurations.
Right. I'm not going in with any preconceived notions about what the design of this intersection should be. I think part of this is just to, to get, that's why we're hiring a consultant, to get some basic data that then lets us know what works better than, and what works, has, and what downsides different combinations have so that we can have a discussion about.
Great. And then finally, and this is, I had mentioned earlier that it looked like Sycamore was missing in the ordinance.
That's right.
At number four. I was just looking again at number two in terms of the intersection capacity analysis. I assume Carroll, is this Ethan and Carroll Avenues? And actually, it looks like maybe it's missing Ethan Allen there. It might be missing the word Allen. Is, is that also involving Sycamore?
Oh, yeah, it is missing Allen.
Is that also, I assume that's also looking at the capacity analysis with Sycamore?
Yes, we wanted to, we wanted to look at that and, and felt that that was important, especially because there may be changes that happen at the hospital site and that kind of thing too. So, so getting some, and that helps tell what direction some traffic might come from, say, University down Carroll, that kind of thing.
And, and so here it says Ethan, with the Ethan Allen and Carroll Avenues, that, that also includes Sycamore though, I assume, right? And that it's basically that intersection with the, the traffic light?
Yes.
Is it for a capacity study, is that right?
Yes, I think we just assumed that they were, it was all one intersection and that's why it's been a little bit confusing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on that. And I don't know if it makes sense to add Sycamore there, but just for reference. Okay. Yeah, I, I think that answers most of my questions. And like I said, I think it sounds like we're moving in the right direction in terms of being able to identify what, you know, specific intersections that it seems like we're concerned about and, and cut-through traffic. And as you noted, there have been several comments from people that it looks like we need to add this or that here, and it sounds like there's some flexibility for doing that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
First off, I want to say thank you for putting this together. I mean, we're finally here.
Yeah.
We've been going through a traffic study of this area maybe three years now.
Yeah, a bit, several.
So I appreciate it. Couple of questions. We went through this same, similar process when the Carroll Avenue Bridge closed, correct? We did this big traffic study.
That's right. We did a number of counts. We didn't do the, we didn't do the projections, but we certainly did a bunch of counts.
And it was led by S.H.A., right? When they were the ones who...
No, it's the city.
City did the study, okay. And after we completed this study, how did S.H.A. fit into the process?
Well, in that case, it was pretty clear because we had information about where we thought signs needed to be put that they may not have originally proposed. We also had information that once the bridge closed, if we saw that there was a lot more traffic going someplace, we had the pre-data so we could tell S.H.A., look, it was this amount, now it's this amount, you need to help ameliorate that problem. And it worked.
And so how do you see us, once we finish this traffic study? How do we go to S.H.A. and work with them on some of the ideas of reconfiguring?
Right. So what, what happens is this information comes back to you. This information comes back to you to determine, is there, is there a version here that would be useful, that the city wants to lobby for? S.H.A.'s not going to go out of its way to do this. But if we have the data, then we're able to go to S.H.A. and say, this would help us in these various ways. You all know there's a problem here, they've certainly heard from us. And then, and then we could lobby for that option. That's, that's the best I can say.
And can you go into more detail on reconfiguring the intersection of Carroll and Ethan Allen? What does that, because that seems to be, you know, the issue.
There's, there's been a number, right, there've been a number of different discussions. It can simply mean closing a street or making a street one-way that comes into the intersection. That may be very, that may solve the problem.
And will that be part of the traffic study? Will we be able to see?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be able to see.
Yeah, so you'll be able to see what happens if you make Sycamore go north or south or whatever.
Okay.
That's the right direction. I always get confused over. Similarly with Grant, there may be, as, you know, there have been residents who have come forth with ideas, there were the couple of concepts that came as part of this little S.H.A. concept study that they, they don't even quite claim as their study, that could help make it so that there's a more regular intersection between Ethan Allen and Carroll. So it's more of a T-intersection or a regular, a regular intersection. One option for doing that allows for perhaps some better used, more usable public space, which might be more on the kind of Grant Avenue, Spring Mill, Spring Mill Bakery-ish side of things. Or it could be that, and it certainly would be something that we would look at in terms of the location of bus stops and where's a good safe place for a bus stop that doesn't hold up the rest of the traffic. So there's, you know, there's a couple of different options on that. And like I said, I don't have a particular, I don't have a preconceived notion about what's appropriate.
No, the resident during public comment mentioned adding streetlights or, you know, would we, would this study consider that or would that just be part of NDC's study? How is that option?
Certainly if a traffic light is needed for the development, that would come out of NDC's study. If there was something here that said a traffic light is needed, you know, that would be one of the topics on discussion. And they can do simulations to show with that, how that would work. From my understanding of the intersection as it is, the light at Sycamore has always caused the whole area of problems. So it may also be an option that there's a removal of a traffic signal and a different option. So there's, I can't, I cannot predict what makes the most traffic sense.
Aroundabout?
Yep.
Is that, will this be something that's going to be considered?
The traffic engineers may, may look at that.
Okay.
My personal belief is that there's not very good room for that, but I'm not the traffic engineer.
And then you see, part of the studies look at cut-through traffic. Why aren't we considering Old Carroll and South Creek Parkway? Is that, we just don't think that that cut-through traffic...
I don't know, but you know, what I've suggested to other councilmembers too, is that if there's a particular area that there's some concern about, just let us know. And so we can ask when we sit down with the traffic consultants to say, you know, if there's a concern about some problems, cut-through traffic over here... a concern about some problems, cut-through traffic over here, what would you suggest? Is there, should we be adding a space to, an intersection to count?" And they may say, "Yeah, this would be a good place," or they might say, "No, we are to count it because of X."
Because if we do make these changes on this other parts of the city, I anticipate that there would be an increase in traffic on Slade Creek Parkway, because it's already used as a cut-through for people moving through the city.
Right, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk about that with them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, thank you, I do have a few questions. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, some of these might have already been addressed, and I apologize if that's the case, because sometimes it's a little bit hard to follow the entire discussion from afar. So, if you don't mind, Ms. Letho. So first off, does this, or would this include among the factors pedestrian, transit, et cetera, the potential of the additional delivery trucks?
Now you're breaking up, but you were asking about, you were asking about pedestrian, bus, transit?
Not, would it include, supposedly, the additional delivery trucks that would be inspected because of the new bid?
Councilmember Kovar, we can't hear you.
All right, I'm going to try to get somewhere else. Have this any better?
Not much, no.
I think, let me, let me repeat what I think I heard you say, and then maybe you could just say yes. So, what I think I heard you ask is how we addressed pedestrian and transit issues in looking at this traffic study, that was one, and then the second was delivery of trucks.
Only the second one.
Only the second one, okay. There's, there's two components. One is just making sure that, from a geometric standpoint, big, big trucks can make turns where they need to make turns. The, the second is that, you know, there are traditionally some things that aren't either allowed, which is maybe crossing the yellow line with an 18-wheeler, or it's, you know, what happens if something is in a place that tends to cause a backup that then blocks a crosswalk or something? All of those things would be looked at.
Okay. And related to that, one of the areas that I think is a concern, and we don't know yet exactly where it's going to end up, is the entrance to the underground parking. Is that, in effect, like a, an intersection that would also be looked at as part of this?
Yes. And in fact, that's, that's the primary thing that would be looked at with the NDC study.
Okay. And would it be in ours as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look at the whole area.
And then, on the historic preservation question that came up, it sounded like, from what Ms. Pierceall was saying, that there had been a previous presentation to the city council. I may have misunderstood what she was saying, but I wonder separately if we do have some backup information on that that could be shared.
Sure. There have been numerous discussions about how do we protect Tacoma Park from a potential widening of 410 through the city? And the SHA administrator had been here, one at the time had been here, and mentioned that a primary reason that it's difficult to widen 410 in Tacoma Park is because of historic districts. And, and that's an absolute truth.
So I think, I understand.
But, but let me be clear, that, that doesn't necessarily, there is differencing, differing opinions about what that means for the actual configuration of the right-of-way. Sometimes historic preservation folks are more interested in the, the buildings, and sometimes they're more interesting, interested in the setting. And so those are two different things that end up being discussed in this.
So, I guess the only thing I would say, we ought to ensure that, that the company that's doing the study is at least made aware of that.
Sure.
Set of issues. Two other questions, and one, I apologize again, you talked about this, but to what extent would you characterize our study as overlapping with the NDC study, and to what extent would you characterize it as complementary to the broad question?
It's, it's more just different, because it is looking at existing traffic and a larger geographic area. The, it, it does overlap in that NDC will be looking at a smaller portion of it that's related to their development, our development. And it, there's, there is, there is a complementary aspect, I would hope, in that if there's a suggestion that comes out of NDC's traffic study that's useful for us to know about, that we know about it, and, and we see what that means for these other components, and vice versa.
Okay, but so geographically, are we leaving out any sections that they're all looking at?
No.
Okay. And then last question, thank you for that last question. This has been raised by some residents in Ward One. There's the environmental impact of the, of the project in terms of, in particular, automobile traffic and what that does. I understand that a traffic study doesn't literally encompass that, you get into the, this isn't the kind of expertise that the companies that are doing this work have, but could you say a word or two about what potential options might be for us to try to look at that problem going forward, that potential problem, if, you know, there was an increase in traffic, or stationary, or slowing traffic, in terms of what the impact would be?
Sure, I mean, right, whether it's, whether it's an increase in traffic, or slowing of traffic, idling traffic, or a decrease, all of that, we would have information about the traffic movement, or lack of movement from these studies. As somebody who has the kind of crib sheets from an environmental perspective about how much exhaust comes from idling cars, could calculate if there was an increase or a decrease in the effect on the environment. And so, those are things that can be done in an estimating way, without an expensive consultant, or they could be done in a very, very complex way, if the council would decide to go there.
I could just say, in some cases, it's not critical, in some cases, it's obviously not that relevant, our environmental impact and language in the agenda is fairly brief. I'm just thinking, this one, when we get to it, we want to ensure that it's as full as we can make it.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we said that, that we believe that there would be a reduction in carbon emissions from idling vehicles if the traffic study is adopted that shows better movement of the cars.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, appreciate that, ma'am.
Thank you. Good, all right, seeing no other lights on, I'll just wrap us up on this, and then we'll move to the actual resolution. I just want to add my thanks, as others have said, to the city staff for working on this more after the city council has tabled this. I want to also thank Councilwoman Dibala for going through her checklist. I think that was very helpful in combining all of those emails that you have received. I'm looking forward to getting the email from Ms. Rizzo that she talked about before, because I think it would be helpful for us to double-check that. But I tried to take notes as well, and I, I do believe, without having the letter in front of us, that we are checking all those boxes and addressing the needs they outlined, but we can look at that one more time when they send it to us. I did mention to the city manager, and I'll just say one thing, that as we're talking with the consultants, Elm Avenue from, you know, Ethan Allen, or not, from New Hampshire through to either Pine or Walnut, where I live, I'm seeing, probably because of Waze and other traffic devices that people have on their cellphones now, an increase of traffic that way. I think people are pulling off of Ethan Allen and coming through the neighborhood, so that would also be another area to look at. But, you know, I, I want to really thank the staff for their work on this, answering all the questions over the last few days, and having an open mind in thinking about what the configuration of this site looks like.
We want to get it right.
Yeah. Ms. Letho, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I was talking to a resident the other day about your background in planning, and they said they had, did not know what your background was in planning, and that actually you, you know about traffic studies and planning and everything. And I thought, this resident suggested to me that, at the public meeting, I asked you to spend just a moment making sure people know what your background is, and what we get in a city manager.
Well, in my first life, I was a planner, and I have an urban studies degree, a master's in urban studies. And as part of that, did a lot of development review, and traffic studies are a large part of that. And then, with the city here, there's also been, not only the small kind of traffic studies that go with development review, but there's been the large ones, even when they were trying to decide if they were going to go forward with Purple Line. And there were lots of studies that went through Tacoma Park related to that. So, yeah, I've, I've been around traffic a lot, traffic studies a lot, so I, I do have quite a few years' worth of experience on, on that. Fortunately, I don't spend my time doing the calculations, but I really do actually enjoy reviewing them.
Great, terrific. All right, so let's move now to the resolution, and I just want to make sure we have, in addition to all the council members should have in front of them, a redline version we just added, thank you to Councilmember Kostik. In the third whereas clause, point number three, we've added Ethan Allen and Sycamore. In point number two, we've added Allen after Ethan. Did I miss any other?
Yeah, so, so under two, I think, I think it should read, "An intersection capacity analysis of Carroll and Flower Avenue, Ethan Allen and Carroll avenues, Ethan Allen and Sycamore, just to be consistent." And then, then they go on, the Carroll and Philadelphia Avenue. The, the additional Ethan Allen and Sycamore that's in red is in number four. You had mentioned number three, but it's in section number four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that, I think that covers it, but.
Great.
We all knew what we were talking about, but it's good to actually have the language right.
Terrific. All right, will someone like to move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cerci, I need more discussion on this. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Do we need to roll a call?
Yeah, all right, we'll do a roll call, see clear lights, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik? Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Cerci?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
All right, our next item is the.
Now for the fun stuff.
Yeah, well, no, we first have the resolution for.
Oh, okay, that's fun, too.
That's fun, too. Resolution providing for the city council's winter recess, which will, we have, as we talked about before, tonight is our last regular meeting. We will have a meeting with our D-20 delegation on December 13th, but basically, we are on recess until January 10th. Will someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Cerci, second. Councilmember Smith, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now the fun stuff. We have our work sessions tonight, we have two work sessions. The first is the presentation of the FY 2017. Oh, and we just lost Councilmember Kovar. He's out. The first is the presentation of the FY 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Where's that CAFRA?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening, mayor, council members, management. I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Cone Resnick, here to present the June 30th, 2017 audit for the city of Tacoma Park. I have prepared a presentation for you, and then you should also have some other documents. What we're going to do is I'm going to go through the presentation, and then there's one document that, that we'll talk about. So, this evening, I'm going to talk about the auditor's opinion, the internal control letter, certain items within the CAFRA, then I included some financial highlights, and then we'll talk about the 114 letter, that's the, those charged with governance. Okay, so in your CAFRA is our auditor's opinion, and it indicates that we've audited the entity as of June 30th, 2017. It talks about management's responsibility, they're responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements. And then, under auditor's responsibility, talks about our responsibility, and the fact that the evidence that we've obtained is sufficient and appropriate to render an opinion. And if you look at the next slide, "In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented for the year-end." And then, under the RSI and other information within your CAFRA document, it talks about some of the schedules there, and what our responsibility is with those. And then, because your audit was done in accordance with government auditing standards, we've issued an internal control report as well, which I will go over right now. So, on the internal control report, this is a little bit different than your auditor's opinion, because the auditor's opinion, we actually say, "In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented." This letter talks about internal control, and we have to understand the internal control so that we can plan our audit to render that opinion. Okay, so within this report, there are actually two sections. There's internal control over financial reporting, and then there's a section on compliance and other matters. Within this internal control over financial reporting letter, there are no material weaknesses noted. Okay, I want to point that out to you. And then, if you go under compliance and other matters, if you look at the last sentence, it indicates that the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance. So, to summarize, in your main audit opinion, you've received an unmodified opinion, used to be called an unqualified opinion, or in layman's terms, it's a clean opinion. And in this internal control letter, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. Okay, so within your CAFRA, what we did here was we just sort of broke down for you the page numbers and how, what the certain sections talk about. I'm not going to read it, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the document. And then, what we've done here is we've gone through and just kind of highlighted certain sections, just to talk about some of the numbers. We did a three-year comparison, and your total net position is approximately $30 million as of June 30th, 2017. And if you go to the next slide on page 10, this talks about primary government revenue, and that is approximately $27 million. And then, the next slide, this breaks down, you know, the four largest items. Once again, it does it by a three-year comparison, so you can see the increase from year to year. And you can see there's a slight increase in the property tax, approximately $400,000 from the previous year, and that's due to increased, you know, assessed values. And then, under grants and contributions, slight decrease, there was a reduction in the cable equipment and the MEA, Home Energy Grant, for the year. And then, under charges for services, slight decrease due to the summons and the forfeiture revenue, that went down slightly, and the intergovernmental revenue is consistent with the previous year. Okay, and then the next slide, this is your primary government expenses for the year, it's approximately $26 million. And then, once again, on the next slide, what we do here is we break down some of the components of that expense item, and it does a three-year comparison. You can see the trends in those areas. Okay, now, GFOA talks about what is an assigned fund balance, and what's a recommended assigned fund balance, you know, what's a reasonable number. And they talk about, the general fund should have no less than two months. So the next slide, what we've done for the last three years is taken your unassigned fund balance, looked at your general fund expenditures, and said, "Okay, as it relates to your general fund expenditures, what is your number of months of fund balance?" And you can see it's, you know, 4.0, 2.4, 2.3, and that is above the recommend, recommended amount from the, from the GFOA. Okay, now, those charged with governance, so that is a separate document. If you don't have it, that's okay, I can go through it pretty well, I'm sure you, you do have it. But what we're required to report to you, were there any significant transactions that have not been recognized in the financial statement? And that's not true, all significant transactions have been recognized. You did adopt a new GASB, it was number 82, and in the back of your financial statements, and they required supplementary information, under the pension information, there was a line that said, "Covered employee payroll," and GASB 82 said, "Okay, let's take out the word employee and call it covered payroll," because they just wanted to make sure that everyone includes the amount that's covered to determine what the net pension liability is, not the entire payroll.
And I'm, I'm going to interrupt, and because plenty of people don't. And I'm going to interrupt, because plenty of people don't know what GASB is.
Oh, sorry.
So, do you want to describe what that is?
Sure. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they issue pronouncements a lot. They're very, very busy folks. They actually have 20 members. I have done some seminars with some of the folks from the GASBs, talking to economic development folks throughout the country on some of the new GASBs that are out there. Great group, they're, you know, very interactive, and they're actually funded by Frank Dodd, that was one of the questions. They have a staff of 20. I'm like amazed at their website and how they can get back to you very quickly. How are you guys funded? So, key question, but anyway, that's what the GASB is. So, within your financial statements, you have estimates, you have estimates on depreciation, you have estimates on vacation leave, sick leave, you have estimates regarding your net pension liability. And those estimates, what we do is we make sure we look at the key assumptions within, you know, each particular estimate, and we note that they're consistent with the previous year. And also, within your financial statements, you know, one of the significant estimates is, of course, the net pension liability. And within your document, it talks about if the discount rate went up by a point or down by a point, what would that do? And that's fairly interesting disclosure. It's on pages 62 and 67, and you can see the difference, you know, if that rate went up or down, what it would do. So, I wanted to point that out. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the engagement. And then, under corrected and uncorrected misstatements, so we are required to tell you if there's adjustments that were really large that we noted as a result of our audit, and there weren't any material adjustments noted. So, as council members, you should feel pretty good about that. I wish I could say that with all my clients, but unfortunately, I can't. But for you guys, I can say that. And we're also supposed to tell you what adjustments that we passed on, meaning they were too small, they're quote-unquote immaterial to the financial statement as a whole, you know, as of each opinion unit, and we're required to tell you and show you what those are, and that's included in that particular document. There's just a few entries there. And then, there were no disagreements with management, and there were no other consultations with other independent accountants regarding any other accounting issues. There were no other audit findings or issues. And then, under other matters, this sort of mirrors our independent auditor's report, where it talks about the RSI information, you know, what we do with respect to the management discussion and analysis, you know, what we do with the pension information as well. It talks about our procedures there. So, that concludes the presentation. You know, as your independent auditor, you know, we work with management, but we work for you. So, feel free at any point in time, you know, now, ask questions, or during the year, you know, you can contact me directly, and I can be more than happy to answer any questions at all. And I guess I'd like to thank management for their assistance. That seemed really easy, but I can assure you, it wasn't.
Thank you, I very much appreciate that. And I will say, last year, I requested, when you asked us for our information, that I think we did it by email this year, or we changed the process so it wasn't stuck in our mailboxes over the summer. And from, at least from my perspective, it worked much better. So, I don't feel like the staff had to track us all down over the summer when we were in recess to make sure we got you the information you need. So, thank you for making that adjustment.
Yeah.
Let's see, who do we have? Councilmember Siemens, you're jumping right in there.
Just, I tell you what, just can't keep me quiet tonight. Well, it's, again, a pleasure to have you here, and a pleasure to see the progress the department's made and how well we're doing. I think in the past, there have been some findings of things that we should have better controls on, and I didn't hear you talk about those much tonight. Were there any areas where you think we still need improvement? And were there areas last year that you have now looked at that have been improved?
Yeah, another item to point out, you know, along with your question. So, your statement gets submitted to the GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, and they review the statement, independent of us, so they reviewed last year's statement. And you have received the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's within your CAFRA document. So, that's something that...
Finance Director.
Yeah, yeah, so that, you know, that's something to be proud of as an organization.
I think it deserves applause at this point.
Yeah, yeah. And, no, your question is a good one. So, under the technical terms of material weakness and significant deficiencies, there aren't any. But however, I mean, there's always areas for improvement. You know, there's an area, I know you mentioned the word IT. So, IT, what we do with respect to IT is we have to make sure we understand the general controls surrounding the IT environment as it relates to financial reporting. So, we don't do a deep dive into IT and say, all right, you know, what are all the issues? Are there any problems, et cetera, et cetera? You know, we look at certain things. You know, that's an area that with cyber issues and privacy issues and all that kind of stuff, that's an area I always recommend to my clients, you know, consider having our group come out and do a little bit more in a particular area, and, you know, we could present something on, you know, what we found in that area, especially with the PII information. You know, that's something that I always, always recommend. Is, I can't recall, is your budget, do you submit your budget to the GFOA, your budget?
Budget, no.
The budget, okay, right. So, some entities submit the budget to the GFOA, and they get that award, you know, the same type of award. I have some clients that they would rather submit the budget to the GFOA than the financial statement, because they feel like, you know, the budget is more of a, you know, a little more of a meaningful document to them in terms of the information it provides, and it's more looking forward as opposed to the financial statement, which is sort of, you know, retrospective. That's something you consider. I'm not going to recommend it, because there's cost benefit with everything.
As I recall, though, you had some recommendations last year of areas where we could do better in controls?
Yeah.
And I wonder if you could review that to see if those have been implemented?
Yeah, I don't have last year's in front of me, and I don't, Susan, I don't know if you have last year. Yeah, yeah, so I would...
That's something I think that we should hear back on.
We'll get a formal statement about it. You know, we take the even very small recommendations very seriously and go through them.
Okay, and then, the other thing, you did make a recommendation regarding IT this year, and I would like to hear back...
And we made those changes, yeah.
...recommendation from the manager on how we could actually take action on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
I'm just going to...
Yeah, councilmembers.
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
We all look forward to whatever you have.
Okay, hopefully, I wasn't too slow.
No.
I tried to go fast.
Do you know, you know, there are 156 municipalities in Maryland. Do you know how we compare with our colleagues getting the Government Finance Officers Association Award? Is it 10% of the membership of the Maryland municipality, 1%?
Great question. I do not know the percentages, but it's a fair, it's a fair amount, and it's, you know, something of distinction. And the fact that you have your infrastructure already set up to do it, you know, it's a testament to management, you know, that they have it already set up and it's done. I don't know, I don't know the percent, but it is a market distinction. I mean, and they do a very, very thorough review, and they also, you know, after they do the review, they send you their comments back, and there's always a few things that, you know, they change, but it's never anything of significance.
Now, you mentioned that you give workshops with the members of GASB.
Yeah.
Is there any type of regulation, any type of recommendations coming down the pike that are going to be applied to municipalities? You know, how we had to change our pension fund, whether it was a liability, or is there something else that you're seeing?
Great, great question. They are very busy. When we do the update with management, we always talk about the GASBs, and once you get into details, you'll notice there's a lot of amendments to what previous GASBs were issued, because what happens is, GASBs get issued, folks look at them, they come up with it, but then there's something else that they thought of that the GASB didn't, even though the GASB has a comment period, they have a preliminary views period where people are supposed to comment. You know, there's a couple of stages before it's actually issued. However, there are, there are a bunch of GASBs that are out there that are coming up. 74 and 75, 74 doesn't apply to you guys, you don't have a trust, so you're okay there. The fact that number leases, that's going to be coming up, that's GASB 87.
Sorry, what is that?
GASB 87, that's actually not going to be until June 30, 2021. So, it's going to be a while.
Leases.
Yeah, capital leases, they want, they're sort of consistent with the FASB, they want to make sure if you have operating leases, if they meet a certain criteria, you're going to have to then capitalize those. So, that's something to look into. GASB 86 talks about advanced refundings, if you have advanced refundings on bond issuances, you know, if you're defusing debt, there's certain amounts that you have to calculate the gain as opposed to before, the way it was done before. GASB 85 is an omnibus, it talks about a lot of different things. It's sort of a catch-all from some of the other GASBs. So, that's 85, 84. 84 talks about fiduciary funds, you don't have any of substance, so that's not a big deal. 82, you already implemented, so you're okay. However, they do have the financial reporting model, and this is going to be a ways away, okay? This is going to change. They're looking at the concept of changing the financial reporting model. I mean, this is very technical, but the way your statements are prepared, you have two statements, you have government-wide, and then you have government. And within the government, you've probably heard the term modified accrual, that's the way your accounting is treated. Well, they're looking at now three different options of how to present it, current, short-term, or near-term. And current is, do they want to present the government funds like 60 days out, just assets or liabilities that are 60 days out? And then, they have another concept where, do you want to present it similar to modified accrual where it's about a year? And then, they have another concept where, do they want to do it just based on standard accrual where you include everything, where it's more than a year current, like it's all-inclusive? And that is major, that's going to be very big. There's, you know, a time that everyone can comment on and pick, you know, which method they want. People aren't really thrilled with it, so, because people don't like change. I don't know if you remember, but they had GASB 34, this was years ago, your statement was first prepared, it was just your government funds. It had general fund, capital project fund, special revenue fund. It didn't have that government-wide activities. And then, I don't know if you remember, but they had, in the governmental funds, you had this thing called the General Fixed Asset Account Group, and then, General Long-Term Debt Account Group, where you just had one line item that said, these are your fixed assets, and then, this is your debt. GASB 34 came along and said, okay, now we're going to put everything on your financial statements the way a business would. We want to see all your fixed asset, your infrastructure, your roads, your bridges, et cetera. And then, we want to see your debt, all your long-term debt, your bonds payable, you know, that type of thing. So, you know, they're always trying to tinker with things and improvement, so, sorry. Long answer, but yeah, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pike, and we talk to management. Management's well aware of it.
Okay.
They're very active in the group, so they know what's going on.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much, and thank you for, you know, coming for our first new council, having them dig into the CAFRA. We appreciate it, I'm sure. We will have more questions in the future, but thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Very much, and thank you very much for all your hard work and excellent work on this.
Yes, Susan Chiang, our finance director, is absolutely marvelous, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, good.
Can I say one thing? I noted in here that this is not the first time that the city of Tacoma Park has received the verdicts.
No, I think we're number 11, yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Director Chiang. And the other thing that's just useful about the CAFRA is there's just an enormous amount of information in it. And so, it's a useful document to go back and look at the charts when you're trying to figure out kind of historical, how we got to where we are on things.
It's public.
Oh, it's public, it's on the website. It's a wonderful way also to compare communities, because communities have to fill out pretty much the same thing, and so you have an opportunity to share that.
And there's another document, we talk about a recommendation, maybe I mentioned this last year. It's called a PAFRA, and it's the Public Annual Financial Report. So, it takes your 189-page document, and it condenses it. So, it's really small, and it just has some highlighted information. Once again, I'm not recommending that you do it, it's just something that the GFOA has out there and says, hey, cities, counties, if you guys want to do it, you might, you know, your citizens might like it instead of this ginormous document.
So, it's kind of a way to explain?
Well, it's a way to make it not so overwhelming, because it's a big document, there's a lot in there.
Right.
And so, you know, it's something to look at, and we can work with management and show them some examples of...
Yeah, I think our residents really like the, oh, no, okay. Those that dig into it really like to dig into it.
People get mad at me when I bring that up, so I'm sorry. Sorry I brought it up, but...
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
For the next item, for some reason, we don't have Tom Loman here, and I'm not sure what the situation is, but it's our actuary report for our employees' retirement plan. That document you did receive is online. There's, we will schedule him to come in, in January, because it's always a highlight to talk with him about pension liability and kind of what the actuaries look at. We have a very small employee retirement plan for our police department, and because we have a small police department, and we're not part of a larger retirement plan. It's, what, 12 years old, 13 years old now? Something like, more than that?
Yeah, more than that.
I can look at it, but it's still, it's not caught up to being fully funded or even 80% funded, which is kind of where you want it to be. So, we have consistently, over the years, followed the actuary's recommendation, and in the last several years, we've added $100,000 a year just into the fund to try to make sure that it is something that our police officers can rely on when they retire. It is, we are fiduciary, fiduciarily responsible for their retirement plan. We have a retirement board, a pension board that meets, that has two citizens on it, has representatives from the police department, the police union, the finance director, myself, and a number of other key staff. And we meet at least twice a year to make sure that our plan is on target. We've made a couple of changes, and part of the things that you'll see going forward, and we'll take the deep breath when we get into the budget process, is that we have changed our expected interest rate of investment return and dropped it from 7.5% to 7.25%. And so, this is something that I think is consistent with good practice within the industry, recognizing that, it used to be that there was an assumption, you get 8% return on investments for these retirement plans. That does not happen. And so, over time, we've been cutting that back a little bit by a little bit. It means we pay out more money every year. And so, we will get, have to pay more money into the plan for the FY '19 contribution. That information is all within this package. One of the other things that we did, I think, two years ago, was change how things are calculated so that there's an ending point, I think it's a 21-year or some...
22-year.
22-year thing for every year. It's a way that I think more accurately identifies what our liability is each year. And all of that information can be shared with you by Mr. Loman, who can explain it, because it is one of those things that your eyes can cross. But actuaries... can cross. But actuaries look at how many employees there are, what their ages are, the number of disabilities, the expected dates of retirement for each, and make some recommendations and assumptions about how much we have to pay in retirement amounts for those who do retire. And we have disability retirement and regular retirement. I think at this point, we have a good plan. I really appreciate particularly the two residents who are on our pension board. They're excellent. And so, we'll provide that information later, but I want to assure you that it is a good plan. We are taking these steps, and even though they're more costly, they're the responsible approach. And do we have to change anything in the code for that? We don't, right? What was?
No.
Right. So, because we're changing the interest, sometimes if there's provisions of the plan, like we changed how much you get for disability retirement, that is actually a city code change. Changing our expected interest rate is not. But it is something that I want you to be aware of, that we went ahead and said that that's something we need to do.
Did we discuss that much?
Right, that we would do it, and so, now we're doing it.
And I think if on page 30, Appendix 1, I know we'll get into this later in January, but I feel like that's a good summary page, especially for us to look at how long we've had the pension.
That's right. And... From 2007.
So, 2007. And if we look at column 3, that shows us our percentage funded, correct? And so, I just wanted to point that out particularly to our new colleagues, that, you know, we're over 56% funded, and I think that is the work of our, you know, Pension Committee and prior councils putting in additional money over the last few years.
Right. If you look, I mean, at one point, we were down to 28%.
Yeah.
And that was for two reasons. One, it was a new plan. The second was, we had a lot of disabilities in one year. And we had too generous of a disability payment. So, that was, we actually did make a change at that point, which helped.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to point out to my newest colleagues that the mayor has provided a good initiation for you with doing the CAFER and the pension plan, both on your first council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, hopefully, that her joke's over, and so, we can go on.
Yeah, yeah, just kind of...
One question?
Sure.
So, on this column 3, what percentage, if it's not 100%, what percentage do you want to get to? Or is it 100%?
You know, I think there's debate about that. I would be happy at 80%. Some people, some people want 100%. If you look at pension funds around the country, many of them are in terrible shape. And partly, they're in terrible shape because they're expensive. They do, we do not pay for employee healthcare in retirement. But, so, they're more expensive plans. But so many jurisdictions do not pay the amount that the actuary recommends to be contributed, and we always do. And so, I appreciate the council always doing that as part of the budget process.
And one of the things we did two years ago, three years ago, is we had a meeting, a dinner with our...
Right, with the Pension Board.
And I think it's, we might want to think about sometime in the future, doing that again, because I think just sitting down informally and talking to them about how they make these decisions and having conversations just like that, like, is it 80%, is it 100%? Is there a target?
Right.
To think about. Getting their perspective on that is very useful.
Well, for sure, it's bigger than 56%.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's bigger than 56%, but as the mayor pointed out, we're glad it's going in the right direction.
It's going in the right direction. Yep.
It's not going to happen overnight.
No. All righty. We're done.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. We're adjourned.
Love it. Love it.
See you next year.
The 13.